Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Richmond Common Council meeting for July the 7th. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance or remain standing for a prayer by Counselor Burkhart?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, I want to thank you for this evening that you've given us to gather here. God, tonight, I want to bring top of mind the victims of the Texas flooding and the loss there, that our thoughts and our hearts are with them. Our thoughts and our hearts are with the folks of this community as well, suffering from loss, hardships, tragedy. God, just wrap your arms around all those that need it, give us wisdom. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Could the clerk please call the rules?
Doug Goss.
Here.
Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Lingle.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bombalow.
Here.
Justin Burkhart.
Here.
And Jerry Purcell.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. We're going to table the minutes for this evening. Any resolutions, petitions, memorials, or complaints to come forward at this time? Hearing none, communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier today, we started the first pass budget meetings with four council members where they appreciate their support in coming in. The controller used, for the first time, she used the circuit breaker tax caps to put into first pass of the budget. Last year, it was something she added at the end. So it looks like, if you look at the first pass of the budget that just came out this morning, it looks like the general fund is out of balance by $3 million. But one of the things you have to look at is she was using the 2025 circuit breaker tax caps, which always comes out in April of a given year. The DLGF and its July 2nd notice said that we will have the 2026 estimates on July 31st. And again, even that's just an estimate. The April, May of 2026, we'll get the actual estimate just like, a final estimate, just like we did this year. The final estimate always comes out the month before taxes are due. One thing to note is that MLGQ maximum levy growth quotient, not C, will be 4% again for 2026, which will significantly reduce that $3 million gap, probably likely closer to $1.5 million as usual for our first pass. Seems like in years past, we're always about $1.5 million, $2 million off. So my guess is that's where we'll end up, but we'll know more after July 31st when they send that report. Right now, we're still just dealing with super rough estimates. And I know last year, it was even later, it was later in the year when we got to 70 to 82, three notices from the DLGF. So it's really hard at this time to make any conclusions or any adjustments. As long as they get them to us by July 31st, before the committee of the whole, that's what really matters. Before we really go and do the final tweaks and committee of the whole, before it comes to council as an ordinance on first reading in September or October. Couple other things to note, NDOT has closed the Cardinal Greenway between Industries Road and Wayne Road for the Revive I-70 project because they're working on that overpass. That section of the greenway should be open later this year, so cyclists who want to travel north on the greenway are recommended to start north of I-70 at that drop-off point. I believe it's Tingle Road is the next one north. NDOT also wants to remind motorists that the 55 mile per hour speed limit through the 20 miles of Revive I-70 construction zone will be in place for the duration of the project for the whole 20 miles, so watch out for that. American Legion fireworks, I think were a resounding success Saturday night, had a great crowd, some of the best fireworks I've ever seen. They met their fundraising goals right before then, thanks to a stage sponsor that came in at the last minute. So soon after they finish your other fireworks coming up in the next couple of weeks, they're still doing that. We'll start fundraising for 2026, which, as you know, is our nation's 250th birthday, so we're looking for a big bang, a big show next year. I think the band did a pretty good job this year, the crowd was pretty good. And I will, our police department did a great job, I think we had 16 officers out there. We had four firefighters and grass trucks, I think we had one small grass fire, we had two on an ambulance and on that side by side. I know we had one young lady who kind of had a heat exhaustion, she was pregnant with twins, and we were able to help her out. And there was a motor vehicle accident afterwards, and I was told that often happens on Grand Boulevard. So if you're like me, well, plan your exit route differently than Grand Boulevard, because they told me that happened last year too at the same intersection. Anyways, slow down, people. All right, so tonight we have, Guide Studio is going to come up and talk about branding. You may recall that from goal number three in our 2019 Cities Comprehensive Plan was, I'll get it out here, was Community Identity Processes and Procedures. So since 2019, even though I've only had this administration for a year and a half and time on council, we were working through all these goals, land use, housing, neighborhoods, parks and rec, et cetera. We're excited to say that we've pretty much checked off every part of goal number three. So as we go forward with the comprehensive plan refreshment, goal number three will naturally change. The last piece of goal number three, of course, was a community identity piece, which is branding. And earlier this year, we partnered with Guide Studio, they have extensive experience in branding and bringing out a community identity in an entire city. And I would like to bring Erica and Molly up, and they have a presentation for you. Sorry, let me get out of this, and I'll get their presentation ready. Oops, didn't mean to do that just yet. There you go. You want the first slide.
Hello, everybody. I'm Erica Deutsch from Guide Studio, and I have...
Hi, I'm Molly Meidinger from Guide Studio as well.
I am the project manager. Guide Studio is a multidisciplinary brand communications and wayfinding firm. We specialize in design for people with places. So we engage you with your place, and that's kind of our goal. So you can see some of the places that we have worked with on this slide. So for the city of Richmond, we are engaged with you all to do a city brand. Brand is so much more than just a logo. It's a symbolic embodiment of all that you have to offer. So we like to say that your brand is here, and we're just here to uncover it. And so that's what we've been doing actually for the past couple of months. So why does your place need to be branded? When your city invests in a brand, it creates a platform that helps you make decisions. It addresses challenges and the things that you want to achieve. So it's consistent representation for your city, it supports economic development, it gives you a growing sense of community pride, and then also reputation management. So what has our process been? Like Mayor said, we have been engaged with you guys since February we came here. And so we've asked our client team to create a steering committee and a stakeholder committee. So the steering committee is a smaller group of staff members and different organization representation from the community. And they're with us throughout this whole process, so they are kind of helping us through, and we're guiding them through this process. And we came up with these brand objectives, so these are not ours, these are what they all came up with. So we want to create a brand that people will recognize and love for the next 20, at least next 20 years, right? We want to hopefully make it longer. Is unique and appeals to all ages, supports an increase in population, helps pull people from the interstate exits, brings cohesiveness to the departments, which actually we met with the department heads today to make sure that we pull that through to all the departments, and then encourages additional physical connections within the community. So part of our process has been to, first, we review current brand and marketing materials that you all have in place right now. And then we did a discovery workshop with the steering committee, so that's that smaller group that's going to stay with us through this process. Then we also did a larger stakeholder group, and we met with them and did some workshop activities. And then we also did some focus group meetings with some smaller groups and some minority groups as well. And then we did a walking tour, and again, it was February, so it was very cold, you can see there's some snow on the ground. And we're actually going to go out and get some better pictures now, now that the weather is better. Then we did a driving tour, we drove all around Richmond, saw your parks, went through Earlham and saw the schools and everything, so we saw all that you guys have to offer. From that and all the information that we collect from the steering committee and the stakeholder groups and the research that we do, we create what we call your brand strategy in the framework. And this is a document, we'll kind of review some of the pieces. But this is going to be something that the communications department and hopefully you guys too will look at and look at for years to come and kind of guide you through some of your decisions. And then we also do some public surveys. So we did a perception survey that had 844 responses, and then we did a public image survey that had 100 responses. And a little bit later, we'll talk about some of those results. And then we're back here discussing brand implementation with the client team. So not only do we give you a brand strategy and then a beautiful design, but we're going to help you launch that into the world. We're not just going to walk away after it's all designed, we're going to help you guys figure out what's the best ways to get it out there, work with the departments and how that they can use it. So we give you guys the tools so that you can do these things on your own. So let's go over some brand strategy highlights. So target our audiences. So when we talk to our cities, they say, well, everybody's our target audience, right? We want to attract everybody. And that's great, and we know that you do, but we can't talk to everybody. So what we do is we really need to distill down to what are those target audiences so that we can really hone in on who we're talking to. And it doesn't mean that we're not talking to the other people, but it just presents that message in a way that those target audiences can understand. So we came up with four target audiences, and again, we didn't do this, this was the steering committee and stakeholder groups that helped us. And so it's existing residents, the small business owners, emerging professionals, and then the creatives, which you have another, an arts component to your city, and that's super important to you and the mayor. And so we want to make sure that we're attracting those people and talking to those people. And then distinct advantages. So these are high-level main points that you want to communicate about your brand. And again, it's not to say that we're not talking about some of the other things, but these are the things that rose to the surface. So opportunity knocks. Richmond is a city on the rise, offering expanding employment opportunities, diverse and appealing housing, from contemporary urban loss to classic single-family homes, and enhanced transportation networks. And I won't read the whole thing to you, but the next one is, a community that cares. In Richmond, kindness and community spirit define daily life. And we heard this over and over and over again in our discovery meetings, that if somebody needed something, there was a neighbor to help out. Or if somebody was raising funds for a certain issue, people are backing it up. So we heard that the community backs each other and cares a lot. History is just the beginning. Even a brief visit to Richmond reveals a city filled with history. Again, we heard this over and over with Jazz and the Rose Gardens and all of these things that are a part of Richmond that we don't want to forget, and we still want to pay homage to them, but you may be moving forward from them. So we don't want to leave them behind, but we want to make sure that they're still a part of you. And then a location with options. Richmond is ideally positioned at the crossroads of connectivity and accessibility. And it's just talking about your location, you guys have a really great location to a lot of bigger cities and many airports, and, you know, travel is easy from here, so it's a good location. Positioning statements. So a positioning statement is a simple and concise internal statement. So this is for the city to use, not putting out there in public. In the positioning statement, the diagram of it is using the audience, the guiding principles, the distinct advantage, and the end benefits. And so the positioning statement that we came up with for you guys is, in Richmond, longtime residents, emerging professionals, small business owners, and creatives find more than just community. They find connection, opportunity, and support. Rooted deeply in value of resilience, creativity, and genuine care, the city actively cultivates environments that inspire growth, spark ideas, and encourage meaningful relationships. Here, history informs the future. Challenges drive progress, and each person's success contributes directly to a vibrant and evolving city. Richmond isn't just a place to live, it's a place to thrive together. So we're hoping that the staff internally uses this and thinks about it and posts it, and, not post it publicly, but post it internally so they can think about it and make decisions. So you have your audiences in there and the reasons that you guys are doing certain things. So the survey results. So these offer key insights into how the community sees your brand today. What they value, what they question, and what they hope for. So the input was gathered through a public perception survey and then a public image survey, which helped ground the brand and the real experiences and perspectives of your community. So this first one was given before we did any of the brand strategy. So you can see the demographics, 844 respondents, 76% were residents, 53% over the age of 45, and 50% were residents for 20-plus years. The city personality words that kind of rose to the surface were people, community, history, and then city. And then the top five assets were city parks and natural spaces at 60%, the Richmond Depot, 43%, higher education presence, 42%, arts and culture was 40%, and then rich history is 36%. And then some of the brand statements, and again, this was done prior, do you agree with these statements? So the kind of top two or three were Richmond's location makes it easy to access nearby cities and destinations. Richmond is investing in downtown revitalization and public spaces. And then Richmond's history and heritage are an important part of identity today. So you can understand, looking back at our strategy, the distinct advantages come from some of these things. And then the lower two that we love to work on, Richmond offers a strong sense of community and belonging. We definitely hope that the brand helps with that. And Richmond is an ideal place for emerging professionals to live and grow. We want to make sure that we're helping with that as well. So distinct advantages, number one, location with options, number two, opportunity knocks, and number three, history is just the beginning. That's what resonated with folks. Community quality, very high quality was low on the list, high quality was 25%. And then neither high nor low were 47%. And then also for businesses, we see again another high, neither high nor low, so kind of in the middle there. All right, so brand look highlights. So I'm going to turn it over to Molly now.
Thank you, Erica. So taking all of this information and the research that we've done, we have worked with the steering committee to then develop a visual identity for Richmond. And we came up with the idea that there is a bridge in every journey. And so for that, we came up with this logo mark that represents a welcoming, kind, strong, historic, supportive, hardworking, authentic, and comfortable Richmond. You can start to see that with that art shape of the typography showing that strong sense of community. And then we start to pull in some of those arts and historic elements with the rose garden kind of abstracted above the Indiana. One thing about this palette is we wanted to show how it fits in with the city and all of the different architectural elements already in the downtown. So as you can see with the color palette that we have developed, it really pulls from what is Richmond. So we pulled from that beautiful blue sky, we have that use of the red, and we have the use of the yellow. And you can start to see how it balances itself within the mark. Something that's really important within a mark is showing that it not only works in full color, but also works in just one color for different uses. So as you can see, we start to strip it down to maybe it's just in the yellow or it is just in the red, showing how strong and dynamic it is. Another element we wanted to honor was the history and the different parts and pieces found within Richmond. And you can see those within those badges down below. We have both the star, we have inspiration from the jazz with the trumpet, and then we also have the honoring of the roses. And so these marks and badges can start to be implemented in different ways within the branding system. Something that's really fun about these marks is it doesn't have to be just the logo. We can start to break it down and have some fun with it by creating different kinds of compositions with patterns with these different graphic elements. So one thing we heard a lot in our research was this idea that art meets industry. And so you can really start to see how that plays together with the use of the trumpet, the piano, the star, and the rose. So this would give different opportunities for maybe, say, banner systems or different ways we can start to implement it. We also recognized the opportunity to maybe downscale the logo, so it's just the R in Indiana, just to provide different opportunities in regards to how we implement this brand. And then as we were exploring, we noticed, as we were going on our tour, these beautiful tiles and brick patterns found throughout the rest of downtown. And we wanted to create these patterns that represented it. So we have our star, we have an abstracted rose, and then we also have our piano, all of which honoring the history of Richmond. And then you can start to see, we wanted to explore how would we implement this brand into real physical items. So we can do this in items such as a tote bag, we can do it on city official buildings on their glass. And then we talked about possibly incorporating it onto city official vehicles. And then it doesn't just stop there, we wanted to expand upon it, and this is an example of the banner system of how that graphic patterning could start to play out. Maybe this is a series in downtown. There also is the opportunity to create water bottles and different elements for city officials. And then maybe there is opportunity to put it on city official workwear and also mugs. And then I thought it was very important to then demonstrate how this mark stands in comparison to the surrounding cities in Indiana. As you can see, it stands very proud in comparison, and it's very clean and refreshing mark. Turn it back over to Erica.
All right, so our next steps are, like I said, we are here for implementation planning. And then we are going to continue with our design development, so that means giving you guys templates, a brand style guide on how to use the templates, how to use the logo, a brand launch kit, so how do we get the brand out into the world? And then... And then, we will do training with the staff members so that they know how to use it and are fully equipped with starting to use it on their own. So, I think we're here for any questions or anything, if you have any. Thank you.
Questions from council or comments?
I like the mug.
The mug is always what people like.
Any comments?
Looks good to me.
Looks good.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I'll have Lindsey email that to all the council members now that it's been made public. You can have it.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Mayor? No, I'm good.
Mr. President.
Mr. Engel.
I wanted to ask, Chief is leaving. I thought the fireworks were great. I thought it was a great crowd and a good time. I just wonder about the intersection of East Main and 22nd. When the fireworks end, and even before that, it is pretty much chaos up there with, you know, kids running across the street and scooters and cars trying to make a left turn off of 22nd. And I just wonder if we could get a police officer out there, just a suggestion for next year. I know we used to have officers, but there was nobody out there, and people just flood across there, and cars and motorcycles come roaring up and down the street. I just wonder if there might be a chance in the future, just a suggestion.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Right. Hooray.
Mr. Burkhardt.
Mr. President, I have a question for the mayor. On May the 8th, we had received an email titled "Council Members Budgeting Seminar," sent by the Controller, where we were invited to attend the seminar that was taking place on Friday, May the 16th. I was sent a post on June the 18th that was reflecting what the mayor had posted in a private group, "Update: Jerry, Justin, and everyone on the Finance Committee refused to attend the state's webinar that we had on Zoom a few weeks ago. That presented an update on all state laws and how they'll affect every city's 2026 budget, not just Richmond's." So, he, speaking from a point of hearsay, not real information, just thought, and then it names the group, would want to know only Ann Taylor and Larry Parker attended the webinar from council. And on that date, I had spoken with the three other members from the Finance Committee if anybody had, quote-unquote, "refused" to attend the state's webinar. And so, my question for the mayor was, can you provide a note of where anyone refused to attend that webinar?
Just that you did not attend, and I know President of Council was disappointed, made comments.
The President of City Council made comments?
Yes, to the administration, yes. I know one from Finance Committee came. We spent all the money for the webinar, and nobody came.
So, but this-
So, I will redact my post. If you refuse, you just didn't come.
Well, so, it's inaccurate. That is inaccurate-
Redact that, then.
That we refused. And so, and this was a recorded webinar, and so, not speaking for any of the three other members of the Finance Committee, I have a job. So, not everything can be attended but needed to be seen at a recorded time. Do you understand that, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, but that was probably one of the most important webinars for the upcoming budget season.
So, the webinar in person was far more important than what would be seen on the recording, Mr. Mayor?
I don't know.
So, when you-
I haven't seen the recording, and if they capture everything correctly, I don't know.
So, this is just one of the issues, and I'm happy to share this into public record, but I've seen a post from you. Unlike some people, I don't need public accolades for doing my job. I did not post a picture of all the limbs I picked up around the neighborhood yesterday filling the truck. That was posted on June the 20th. In this group, there was a county commissioner that was threatened with their personal safety in the group that you were posting in, that's also owned by the President of the Board of Works and which you appointed. That also, there is a post in there criticizing our Parks Department representative here, how she has worked there for 10 years, and so on. And so-
I can't comment on anybody else's post? Can't control Facebook?
No.
And you can't?
And no.
I'll retract my statement.
But what kind of message is it sending, Mr. Mayor?
There's a lot of stuff on social media.
Let me finish. Let me finish. What kind of message is it sending to the public, the taxpayers, in which they hear these presentations about culture, and they see you commenting, and will soon be redacted, about refusal of members of this council? And what does that say to everybody that is seeing this show unfold? Mr. Mayor?
I can't comment about what other people think or say. Nobody can.
So, I'm not speaking for anybody else up here, but we've got business to do.
Yes, we do.
And I don't think-
Get back to it.
It starts with the leadership of the city.
And council, Finance Committee.
That did not refuse to attend the meeting that you said we did.
Okay. Let's move on.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
Now that that has been brought up, I would like to say that I did watch the webinar. I believe it's three and a half hours long, and I've watched it twice to try to clean everything out of it. And when you talk about dedication, I drove six and a half hours to be at this meeting tonight. So, I think the dedication of council is here. Thank you.
I was on a field trip with my granddaughter, and I sent a memo to everybody on there, and I did watch the webinar, just for the record.
Any additional comments?
I think it would be great to get back to business.
Report of the Board of Public Works and Safety is in your packets. That's the minutes from June the 5th. Do we have any comments or questions? Reports from department heads, we have none. Miscellaneous business, we have an ordinance on first reading.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules and read ordinance 322025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 322025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number 322025. An appropriation, ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
I don't think, do we have someone to speak for that? Thank you.
Evening, council.
Good evening.
Alex Cox, Deputy Controller. Ordinance 322025 is the Richmond Fire Pension Board is requesting an additional $12,000 to be appropriated to account 8801-0113-301-3110 to cover pre-employment physicals. Short story on this, this was approved at the last council meeting, but we did not wait the 10 days in between to fully approve that. So, DLGF said we have to redo the entire process. Essentially, we just need to wait till the 7/21 meeting to fully approve this.
Any questions? Back to you.
Back to Finance.
Back to you folks.
There you go.
It's a reader. Any ordinances on second reading? No. Any unfinished business to come before us?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
All in favor for adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you.
Don't forget about RP&amp;L.
RP&amp;L in-
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
One line mercy.
3 minutes.
Knock me down, you call me shorty.
You are watching Whitewater Government Television, WGTV, Channel 11, part of the Whitewater Community Television family of stations.